Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate this wonderful audience and those of you at the table here who are going to share insights around the school pairing ideas. We've got representatives from Twain and Longfellow participating tonight. Again, thank you for preparing and being here tonight. The first item is hearing from you all, and I'm not sure how we'd like to proceed. Is there, do you have a round?
Can we do introductions?
Oh, yes, of course.
If they can tell us what grade they're teaching or what school they represent.
Can I also say something before we start? So, I hope you guys are just open with us and honest. Like, we are here to learn about this, and we're not going to judge anybody on what they say or anything. So, we just want to have that open conversation with everyone at the table, which is why I think we wanted you here. In fact, I think I asked for you to be here at every meeting, but that's not possible. So, that's just my two cents. So, don't feel like we're judging anyone or going to be retaliatory or anything. We just want to hear what you guys have to say.
Your living, your work in this change that you proposed would have an amazing impact in the work that you do and hearings from you on what that impact would be like. I mean, we can't do this without your input, so I just echo what Paul was saying about we're here to listen and learn and so excited to meet you. So, introduction, I think, let's start right here.
I'm Debbie Bennett. I am the Assistant Principal of Twain and Kirkwood Elementary.
Welcome.
I'm Kristin Eas. I'm a Title I Reading Recovery Teacher at Twain.
I'm Kayla McKee. I'm a student family advocate at Mark Twain.
I'm Lindsay Schlauber, and I'm the School Counselor at Twain.
I'm Tara Taggart, and I teach second grade at Twain.
Jason McGinnis, and I'm the lucky new principal at Twain.
Lisa Collier, I'm a teacher librarian at Twain.
I'm Michelle Maury, I'm a librarian at Longfellow.
I'm Kelly Webb. I am the principal at Longfellow.
Jamie Sworson, third grade, Longfellow.
Paula Raca, fourth grade at Longfellow.
Nikki Schmidt, School Counselor at Longfellow.
Alisa Gerek-Sinkels, Special Education at Longfellow.
I'm Amanda Wozley. I'm a student family advocate at Longfellow. I need to say I'm half-time there and half-time at Lundy.
Wonderful. Thank you again for coming. So, where should we start for inputs? I'm looking at Kelly and Jason.
All right. I mean, I feel like I'm a little objective anyway since I'm due to the district. So, I guess I just want to get my mind straight. Just to clarify the proposal, it's a pairing of K2, 3 through 6. Which one's 3 through 6 and which one's K2?
K2 would be Twain, 3, 6 would be Longfellow because of the multiple stories at Longfellow. And that's the primary driver, I guess.
And what about pre-K? I think that's been a big question for Longfellow is because pre-K was not invited and that, I think, we have that at our building.
And I feel like we need to include that.
I'll say that pre-K's been brought up, and with the option of would you lump pre-K with the K2, or would you have pre-K still at both buildings? And there was, there's not an answer to that, but it's been brought up and discussed as, you know, which way. We need to address one with the other.
And I talked with the pre-K teachers at Longfellow on Sunday, and they would very much like to maintain pre-K at Longfellow as well as Twain. They were very excited about that idea. So, we as a board would have to visit that and decide how we wanted to handle that. I presume that's what you think as well, or what are your thoughts?
I think we're just here to kind of share our thoughts, and you guys make that decision. And I would hope that we could reach out to them to have their opinion as well, so we more represented here too.
Yeah, I agree. Firstly, I don't even like pre-K or any other grade. However, you, teachers can teach, kids will learn. I think where you're, I guess my input would be, I would really like to know what the parents have to say, and that's going to be something I need to ask you guys.
And I guess I can say, I'm the counselor at Twain, but I also have two kids. I have a kindergartner and a third grader at Twain. And as a parent, there will be some inconveniences if I have a kid at one school and a kid at another, but we're willing to make that happen if we can make our schools and the community more equitable. And so, that's my parent perspective on it.
Can you explain the proposal, why it came about, how it came about? If it's just looking at two schools, if it's looking at the district, why? Some of us really found out about this last week. So, we're about eight days into this quarter, moving into a new building, getting ready for 100th anniversary, and all of a sudden this gets dropped on us, and we're like, wait a second. And then you get the rumor built from everybody in the community. So, if you could fill us in a little bit, I would appreciate that, just to know exactly where you guys are at with it, so we can start believing about it. I'll start.
He is excited.
This is the presentation.
That's kind of what a lot of us have been going out and doing presentations, and I know that no matter how we've done it, somebody's always got to, it's going last. You guys aren't last, by the way. But everybody's like, why haven't we heard about this? Why haven't we heard about this? And we are trying. So, I'll give you the, kind of the synopsis of kind of our presentation that we've been going out to the community, because it sort of does illustrate kind of where we were at and how we got to where we are today. It started with the thought that we don't have equitable learning environments across our district. And in 2016, the board voted on elementary boundaries to take effect in 2019, primarily because we've got two schools opening up in 2019, so if we have new schools opening up, that's time to start looking at boundaries. And they made an attempt at the time to try and balance some of our demographics, both socioeconomic and by race, is kind of what we're looking at, right? And it did some improvement in some places. There was no change in other places. So, it didn't capture what we wanted to be done. So, as we started talking about it, we're like, well, boundaries are changing in 2019. There's kind of tweaks to it that we could make that would make the numbers look better in the end and really work towards integrating our schools. And the answer is not yes or no. It's, well, sort of, right? So, the way our schools are spread out across our district, and some are very close together, some are very far apart, not everything works everywhere, right? So, just slicing up a little piece here and moving it over here can get you some different looks at different schools, but it's not really going to integrate our schools really well. That's where the proposal of what about a pairing? Because you can take two populations that are geographically close but demographically different, put them together in one group, and spread them across the two schools, you know, pre-K through 2 or K2 and 3 through 6, and you have some balanced demographics there. And you also have some ability to have, you know, larger grade teams, so you get some benefit there. And that was an option. And again, that works in theory, right? In places that are geographically close with disparate demographics, but that doesn't work everywhere either. There's, you know, schools that are very isolated, or as you kind of move out, boundary, 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 it still all looks the same, right? So, those isolated ones, you have to come up with some other plan, and that's maybe, maybe that's where you look at a magnet school and you drive people to it, but then if you drive people to it, you've got to take people out of it, and that opens up a whole nother set of problems. So, it's been this evolving conversation amongst the board and the district, trying very hard to be mindful of current state and the real sense of urgency that some of our kids need help today. And something that is not just, let's try this, and if it fails, we go back to the grind, or we want something that will be sustainable and effective for the long term, really setting a precedent for 20 years from now, what does our district look like? And so, we've been playing that balance game, and we have set a pretty ambitious timeline to try and meet that sense of urgency, and we have kind of kept to a pretty ambitious timeline to make sure we don't get just so tired of working on it, we just like, eh, I'm done with that, so I'll move on to something else. So, it's really keeping our eye on the ball, knowing full well that some of these changes are short-term, mid-term, and long-term, and what all, where they're all going to lie are going to be all across the board, right? So, we started talking about pairing, and then we kind of went back and figured out, okay, how would pairings work with boundary changes? Are there boundary changes that you can do that then make pairing more, make more sense later to do it? Do you do some slight changes ahead of time in preparation? Do you do pairing all over the place? Obviously, I mentioned earlier, I don't think that works everywhere. There are more than one place that it might work, but there are more than one reason why districts do pairings, was the point that I tried to bring up at all of our various meetings, is that you, if you go and Google school pairings, right, you'll see pros and cons, but you'll see kind of two different schools of thought. And one is trying to integrate your schools better, and you have better integration, and maybe you get some operational efficiencies along the way. And the other school thought is you pair schools to get operational efficiencies, and then if you're lucky, maybe you get some demographic balance along the way. You know, and our focus has been on balancing our demographics and knowing that we need to have operational efficiencies to pay for anything we're going to try and maintain as a secondary thing. So, you'll see, you go back through some of our board docs, there's been multiple different pairing scenarios for each other. Some of them are more efficiency geared versus balancing geared. So, in my personal opinion, I'm going to speak for the rest of the board on that second tier for me. But we're still kind of in that, all right, we need to know if it's a feasible thing between Twain and Longfellow or anywhere really, right? We gathered information from the education side of, you know, admin, and then from the facility side of what kind of the pros and cons and what could or could not be done, the hurdles that we'd have to overcome. And we have gotten, well, you know, you get one article in the paper, and you get plenty of feedback from it, so we've heard from a lot of families. But we've also, you know, gone out to some of these community groups and kind of laid down some of this information and given them a lot of data that, as JP alluded to at the board table there, there's a lot of data in there of what our district looks like, and it surprises a lot of people what it looks like in terms of, what's it, a slide like that.
This one slide is one that we use and we talk about, and it shows just, you don't even have to see what the school names are underneath, but you can see on the left. Sorry, JP. You know, because those are the schools with the highest degree of population of FRL students, and down on the far right, it's just a complete, you know, opposite scenario. And so, that's today. So, when Hoover Longfellow switches, what is the FRL going to be for Longfellow at that point, when a population will no longer be considered by the whims of families?
That's part of how the conversation has evolved, because we started going back to, okay, what's current state? Let's try and fix current state. And then at some point, I honestly don't remember when it was, we decided, you know what? We've already got changes put into place that got us to a point, let's assume that we have those, so that became our current state kind of look at. So, depending on where you're looking at the board docs, you might see old numbers put together or the assumed numbers for 2019 put together, and I would have to ask state or something else, like which ones are which.
Living for the new attendance zone is 24 percent most socioeconomic status for Longfellow and 66 percent for Twain.
And we have a goal, we have a goal of 50 percent low SES at that school. And you can see just by looking here, we're very far from our goal today. So, that's that. What is the new Hoover school going to be at? Do you know that?
New Hoover?
Yeah. I'm just curious. That must be pretty.
New Hoover is 42 percent.
Okay. So, with the, with the proposal of the two, is there a figure of what Longfellow, if Longfellow were 3, 6, and Twain were K2, have you been able to project, you know, if it were today's students?
It largely stays the same, because it's based on families. There may be some difference if a family only has 3rd through 6, but I don't know if we can project that.
I can tell you that K6, the entire extension area, it would be 43 percent most socioeconomic.
Oh, okay.
Put them both together.
Or both of them.
To pair community.
Longfellow and Twain together, it gets to 43, right? 43, okay. Which is a lot different than 66 we would put back, which is a basic, a basic change that's already in place.
But then, so that would also indicate that they, both schools then would continue to receive the extra services, title services at both schools? Does Longfellow have? No.
No, we do not.
Okay, so, but if you're 43 percent, then you qualify for title services?
The way that, the way, so we get our Title I money as a district, and then the district decides how to allocate that, and so that could be just a decision that the admin and board make, how we want to allocate the Title I.
So, that would be an advantage for services.
Before you have those done, there's the services.
There's other services that have, you know, minimums that are higher number, and that's some of the discussion we had with the head team, right? I think there's like a 60 percent number, some, I don't remember what all of them are, but there's, you may lose some stuff because of the Title I's a little bit different.
Yeah, Title I would probably be the biggest piece of that money. A lot of the other money is certain grants that are competitive grants, that your high FRL number you might use to compete with other districts. And again, that's not a guarantee we would lose that, but if our FRL goes down, we may.
Can you give an example of those, like 21st century?
Fresh fruits and fruits and vegetables. They're mostly USDA.
21st century is, is, that's based on.
That's by hospital.
Just from a resource perspective, just so you guys know, so right now, we're operating under the RAM model, right? Weighted Resource Allocation. That's 28 teachers. That's costing about $2.5 million a year to have that RAM model. So, just bear in mind, our biggest cost is always teachers, and if there's any way we can save there, that's great. And that doesn't mean nobody ever loses their job. Talking about 28 teachers, we hire 100 new teachers a year. So, if we can change RAM, you know, if we can bring FRL down and save teachers, then compared to, you know, $100,000 fresh fruits and vegetable grant, at this point in the district, I mean, you know, some teachers are costing a hundred grand.
So, speaking of that, class sizes, I think that's a concern of, of probably not only Longfellow teachers, but probably could also be a concern for Twain, because right now they are lower class sizes compared to our higher class sizes. Can you speak on that?
Yeah, so it may, and it may change. You know, the reason, right, Twain has lower class sizes is because of the resources needed to educate a populace that, you know, isn't reading at proficiency. So, our hope is we don't need those resources. You know, when we have more balanced class sizes that we don't need to put in. There was a parent who made a comment at the last thing, you know, her daughter's second grade class yet, last year, 70 percent of the kids couldn't read. And so, the amount of resources that takes is phenomenal. If you've been in those classrooms, you know, you understand how different of a learning environment. I mean, my daughter, you know, has some things like that, and if you're a kid in that environment and you're, you can read, you're fine, you know? The resources are going to go to bring those kids up, as they should. You know, kids need to read. And so, that's, that's the trade-off, right? Is you may see higher class sizes. There was somebody that brought this up, that maybe there's a sweetener, you know, maybe there's something that could sweeten the pot a little bit for schools that are going through this transition. And so, the board has talked about, you know, maybe we have some sort of a modified RAM for some time, so we can try to keep those class sizes, and that would be sort of a, and it's, again, we haven't talked about that in a lot of detail, but it's a possibility. You know, I say we save 28 teachers. You know, if we as a board decide, you know, we can save those, we can get down within five years, or however long we think a transition would take. You know, even if we save 10 teachers, you're talking about a million dollars.
But you're talking about displacing those teachers, is what this one is.
No, we're talking about getting rid of positions. Yeah, just get rid of positions, right? So, so we don't have.
But it could be a displacement to another building if we were to increase sizes and possibly lose resources and turn that figure out.
So, I just want to say on the losing resources, if we go down on RAM, that's a net gain by a tremendous amount, right? Like, it's hard to compare, right? So, if we go down on RAM, we're not going to lose, I mean, we may lose specific grants, but overall, we're not, our general fund is going to gain, and that's very important moving forward. And that, in a couple of years from now, our unspent balance is going to dip below zero, and those are going to be super tough years for everybody involved in any kind of staff, raising the pay, that sort of thing.
But that's going to mean we won't have the same number of teachers that we currently have in both buildings now, still working at those buildings. They might be placed somewhere else.
There is a potential for that. There's been, so, there's been local support from board members during this process that we would not want to affect the RAM immediately, because we don't know what positive or negative effects that's going to have, and I don't think we want to immediately say, oh, now you're in this class and you've got nice demographics there, so you can now have 30 kids instead of 18, right? That's not where we want to get to, right? As it was pointed out, to me, the displacement is going to be, half of your staff is going to be displaced, right? Because they're going to be secondary teacher, or, you know, higher grade teacher moving to the other one or vice versa, right? So, there is displacement there regardless. So, you know, if you were a second grade teacher and you're teaching at Longfellow, which would be the 3 through 6, unless you change grades, they're going to have to go, right? There's displacement there.
I think that's the transparency we're trying to, with our questions, that's what we're trying to gather for our staff, because I think that's, if I had, can come and kind of speak for the teachers, that's a little bit of, I think the frustration is the, is the lack of transparency about really the implications that might have, that's either already been discussed or that you're already, or that you're kind of talking about. We do, I don't know what our timeline is for this. We do have a list that the teachers generated. I do want to be pretty honest from the Longfellow, and we have, I really appreciate the teachers that are coming and representing both sides, but it was kind of hard to gather representatives to come talk and represent us tonight in fear for variety of reasons. So, and how it might look, our concerns. So, I think it's important for you to know and understand that. And we have lots of questions, and maybe questions you can answer, and maybe questions you don't have answers for. So, that's why I just don't know, like, how, and I don't want to speak to the teachers at this point, but I do know that I gathered some, some feedback from the teachers.
And I'm sorry, Kelly, we're kind of in a similar position. I feel like the education side, I mean, you have the best teachers a district could hope for in asylum. You guys, the teachers are amazing. I'm not worried about that part. I think what the teachers, to get the elephant out of the room of how many teachers are going to get displaced, or are they going to? Once you kind of quell that fear a little bit, then we can have a real conversation maybe, and I hope I'm not stepping on bounds here, but I feel like that's the feedback I'm getting too, like, okay, where am I going to go? Am I going to miss my kids? I love these kids. It's that kind of concern that if we can get to the teachers and be like, no, we just need your, we need your, but be transparent first on what the actual impact's going to be on my personnel, I think that would help. But as far as the educational piece, at least what I've seen in my short time here, and I grew up in Iowa, my mom's a teacher, these teachers can teach whatever they do. I just think it's, that part of this, I feel like, I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's some of the feedback I'm getting. I just feel it's just some trepidation on part of what's going to happen to my kids, my school, and my colleagues.
I can tell you that last, the last work session, we went over this, so, I mean, it was in our meeting, we, the HR came and presented us with, this is what it would look like right now if we did no RAM model, changing staffing. It would be, basically, it would be one less teacher at every grade level between the two. And I'll be honest, I was at the meeting, I looked at those numbers, and I said, the class sizes are still too high for me to have one less at each level, so, I mean, I, and I'm kind of agreed with JP, we would have to still look at the kids that are there, the staffing needs that are there, and I would be very concerned to raise. I think when we looked at it, it was all but two grades went up in class sizes, and it was third and fourth grade, just with the current numbers. So, every other grade went up, and some of them went up by almost six students, you know, and that's, I can be honest, my wife teaches that one of those grades that went up by six students, she would not be very happy about that. So, I've heard about it.
It may not seem like much, but from our classroom, it's, that's.
So, I mean, we did cover this a little bit, and that was one of the concerns that I brought up at the last work session, was that some of those sizes are a little too uncomfortable for me, right?
Yes, if you're talking to educational impact, that's the kind of thing. That, to me, in my experience, that's educational impact. If you pay a teacher that has 20 kids, and 15 of them can't read, and six of them are transitory, and they're only going to be there three months, you drop, you drop that up to 26 or 30, then you have educational impact. That's educational impact, and that's, that's the kind of stuff I like to talk about, so if we can get that. So, yeah, they'll be displaced, but they would be, you lose one grade level. How many teachers do you lose a year for matrician?
We hire, I think consistently, we've been hiring 100 teachers a year for the past.
Which is both retirement and people leaving here, yeah.
Okay. So, that gives some perspective.
That's where we are at, is 30, right? 30 a class, so.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, that's where we're talking educational impact, and that was.
And as far as, you know, who would be displaced, I mean, I think that would be part of the challenge if we go forward, is that you two, I mean, from what I'm concerned, we're not going to change that building principals really get a lot of say over their staff, and that would, you know, it would be different, because it would be a tandem effort, and you'd have to kind of decide, you know, between what your staff, you know, maybe you do have staff that wants to switch grade levels and that fits. So, I would just personally, certainly as a board, not, I mean, that's.
I think that's the, that's a little bit of even tonight's uncomfortable, is you're pitting us a little bit against each other, and that's what the, that's a little bit of the uncomfortable feeling, I think.
That's educational impact. If they can't trust me, if they don't, if they don't trust me, then I lose any leadership ability I have for the kids to learn. So, we have to be mindful of that. I know, Kelly and I can work together, we do it out here, but it's, we need, they have to trust us. So, just keep that in mind.
Right. I don't know how long we've been talking. Well, we haven't talked about kids yet in all. We haven't talked about children. You know what? I love teaching at Twain. It will break my heart to have our staff broken apart. I love our staff. I love our kids, I do. But it's not about me, right? I mean, if, if my job is so stressful that it's detrimental to my health, then it's going to have, something's going to have to be about me, right? But, but this decision is not about me. It's not about what's convenient. And they ask, I mean, what are you going to do about your library books? And it gives a rip about the library books. Well, figure it out. That is not important. What's important is that we have so many students at our school who, and so few role models for behavior and academics and anything else, that it is an impossible hole to dig up. It's about those kids. I don't want to move. I don't want my staff, my fellow staff members to move. I don't. I love it there. But I also know that it's not a great environment for our kids.
Thank you.
Even though we try our best every day.
And I'll just say, it's also not just about the kids that are in school right now. They first proposed this in '09, '10, this same parent, and I'm telling you, between that time, we've just lost a whole bunch of kids.
Are there other options on the board, like, on the docket for trying to?
So, if you do a boundary shift, I saw a community member suggested this. He's like, why don't you just send a lot more FRL kids to Longfellow? The problem is then, who do you send out? I don't know that there's a group of folks in the Longfellow neighborhood that's going to say, we're the ones that are going to go out, unfortunately.
And then that brings me to my next question. I think where a lot of us are asking, you mentioned there's lots of other buildings that are, that are out there for combinations. One of the questions from the teachers is why Longfellow and Twain?
They're the closest, and they're the most, they're the closest and the most demographic they set.
Yeah, we're also looking at Schimmick Man, because pairing in small schools really saves small schools. And I'm a big one on efficiency, and where the money goes and everything, and anybody who watches a meeting knows I'm like, maybe too much. But anyway, when you take two smaller schools and pair them, you get, you get a tremendous operational efficiency instead of having a school that has very small class size just because of location and that. You can get it more efficient, and that is year after year after year of savings and collaboration of staff and everything like that. So, we're looking at it, it's, I understand your feeling is like, wow, we just do, just you out. No, we, we looked at some, and we looked at some that really don't make any sense because of increased travel costs and that. This isn't the only thing we're looking at.
because of increased travel costs and that, this isn't the only thing we're looking at, and sometimes we get fixated on, I use the analogy of somebody in the shop that gets a brand new die grinder, all of a sudden, everything is something that needs to be polished up for the die grinder, and you hear the thing running all day, and you say, put the thing away, kid. But, uh, so there's, there's other things in, in other areas, we spent a lot of time on this one and that, and believe me, we haven't been doing it in secret. Uh, they've been at our work session meetings, they're open to the public and everything that way, I understand that, you know, in the summer, people's attentions and things like that aren't always on, uh, what we're doing, but we spend a lot of time going through it and working through the pros and cons, and definitely that's, you know, we wanna hear from you guys where it's gonna be an issue and, and everything like that, but I, you know, everyone up here is not wanting to say, okay, this is a way, so we're eliminating staff, it's better utilization of it. And for me, the biggest, you know, when we get our annual reports, and then the last one, when we had our uh, black and Hispanic proficiency rates in the elementary level at thirty percent with, across the district, we've got to, it's unacceptable, and, and, and.
Ours at Longfellow, two thousand sixteen, were thirty percent. Or I'm, I mean, yeah, I must, you said district-wide or whatever, but I said, I mean, I, I, I think sometimes as teachers, we have some concern, because we absolutely do feel like Twain is just kicking it with a crazy situation we go into every day, and we are, we are proud to say we're colleagues with you. And what you're doing every day, it's hard, it's hard to talk about it. Um, you can't just assume that if we integrate, everyone's test scores are gonna magically change. And, and the benefit of just simply balancing demographics, I wanna, we all wanna know, where's the academic proof that's gonna be in their best interest in each of the subcategories, not just a blanket FRL, but within each of those groups, because at Longfellow, we had to take a hard look at ourselves and be like, we're not doing enough for these kids.
You're, you're absolutely right, and, and, and also, we're also looking at is, is the curriculum, is, you know, it's, it's not just, it's not just one thing, and that's, and that's what I was trying, trying to get to with the die grinder, and how much, and we, and the question. But, uh, definitely, there's, there's more than just the pairing, is it curriculum, is, is, is that the type of, uh, discuss, needs to be part of this discussion as well, um, but, you know, we're, we're looking at, at every, at every option.
So, I'm, go ahead. I'm new here, that, uh, it was, but I heard from the teachers, one concern is that, what kind of supports would be put in place for teachers? That this is maybe a newer, new population from these things, um, because, um, I worked at Roosevelt previously, and I know that I had a lot of professional development in those kinds of things, but Longfellow, that hasn't maybe been the target for professional development. So I think it's really important to get bored, not just, just doing it, but what kinds of supports would be in place.
And I think if, if you back off what you said, was it provides opportunity for professional development, so then, as a bigger picture, so there's two buildings out of the whole district that would be doing this model, potentially maybe more, right? Um, what, I guess, poses challenges does that come with as well? Especially as we're trying to have a uniformed, um, professional development in a way to ensure we're all on the same page, um, because we are one district, and, um, so I think that that's also been kind of, um, just a question from the teachers, what that would look like, what's the benefits of doing that? Um, and then how does that still keep us going in the same direction, um, as one, right? Um, again, for that quality.
One positive for the kids, I think, is that you're not, you're not just taking a group of kids and just sending them to one school or another, you're also sending some of the teachers there as well, so now you have teachers working together, that teachers from Twain can work with the teachers for Longfellow, that, you know, with those kids that are coming over, you're gonna know what some of the needs are and vice versa, I think you're gonna have some of that, and that's where the collaboration piece would come in.
And another, like, a climate of culture then, work that would need to be done as well, because you're taking two buildings and, and merging the two. So, you know, that also has to be kind of some forethought as, as well, I think, um. And I also think the research behind the multiple moves is another thing, um, that would not probably prove in favor of, um, a move or having, um, a K-three or a K-two building, pre-K, um, and then another one just sets multiple moves, and, um, as well if this was to happen, I think, um, a concern for the teachers was, and staff and families as well, is, um, Longfellow just moved back, and so then, we're moving, we'll potentially move again. Um, I think some other things that were brought up, that were mentioned from the teachers is the transportation concern for families and students. Um, also, you mentioned role models, but even having older students as role models is key. Um, I know that our guidance counselor mentioned that as well. Yep, no, you're fine, absolutely, and I know our SFA, um, do you have anything that you wanted to add about some of the, um, resources for, okay, or family concerns or?
Um, I haven't, like, I haven't spoken to a lot of families in Texas that have RPTA today, um, and parents just have questions. It feels like people are operating in groups of fear mode, because they don't have answers to things. So, I know that you're meeting with parents in different trips, um, I do, I don't know about some of the families that are working with them, that maybe might not have, might, might not be able to access, or just simply don't, um, but I also have a, so, I don't know.
I think the big fear is they think that there's gonna be an announcement made in a month, and that is gonna be for, and so you could be transparent with everyone on what this timeline looks like, because they're thinking it's gonna be the beginning of the next school year, you know, it's kind of just going through the motions, but a decision's been made, I mean, that's, there's, there.
So I was gonna jump in on that point, actually, um, so, uh, our process right now is that we're, we're talking about this, and we are also talking about boundaries, um, and potentially other areas of the district, and, um, and also, Longfellow and Twain, boundaries as well, I mean, it's, it's all kind of part of the same thing. Um, although, um, we recognize that if we choose to do a pairing, that can't happen at the same time as the boundary change is gonna happen, because the boundary change has to happen next year, because two schools are opening and one school's closing, so it's happening in twenty nineteen, kids are moving, period. Um, we cannot pull off a pairing that soon. So our, our administrators, we've asked them, what's realistic, what's gonna work, and they have said that that will not work. So, um, to answer that question, we haven't determined yet when it will work, we haven't decided if we're doing it yet, but, um, it, it would not be at the same time as, uh, the boundary change in twenty nineteen. Now, what we would, what, one thing we're keeping in mind, as we think about boundary changes specifically for Longfellow and Twain, is if we're going to do a boundary change, let's keep in mind what our longer goal is, so if we are thinking, this is one of the reasons we're focusing so much on pairing right now, because we wanna think of this in terms of, what is our end goal? If our end goal is to end up with a pairing, then we wanna do things along the way that makes sense. We don't wanna put kids into Longfellow that are gonna be pulled out somewhere else when, um, there's a, a pairing. We, we wanna try and, um, if we're gonna move a group of Twain students into Longfellow in twenty nineteen, we're doing that because we recognize there's a need for some balance, um, but we also recognize that our end goal is that we're gonna have a pairing there, and so those cohorts of students are eventually all going to be together again, anyway. Um, uh, so again, back to our process, right now, we're talking about, um, this decision, uh, because we kind of need to know what we're gonna do with pairings, uh, before we can get real serious about our boundaries, because again, it all intersects. Um, at our work session last week, we talked about, um, what else is it that we need to know? We decided that, uh, the administrators, we're gonna put together a list of questions, some of those questions were gonna come from tonight, things that you guys raised for us. Um, we are gonna hear from parents, they'll tell us the questions that they have, and then we, as a board, will have to sit down, and we will talk about what are some solutions, and believe me, we don't have all the answers, so we're gonna be coming to you guys and say, what do you think should happen? Um, and this is gonna be a process, it's not gonna happen overnight, and we're not gonna just impose this on you, we want you to be part of it. Um, so I, I understand there's a lot of fear and trepidation right now, because there's so many unknowns, and I can totally get that, um, in, uh, twenty fourteen, um, there was, uh, eighty-five percent of the students in my kid's school were gonna be moved out, um, and that plan got changed, but, um, there was a lot of fear and trepidation about, what, you know, if only fifteen percent of the students are change, are staying, what's that gonna be like? And, and we're gonna hear the same thing when we start talking about boundaries, we're gonna hear it from all of the district, believe me. Um, so, you know, we really just need to, to work together, we need you to tell us what it is that we need to know, so that we can work on it.
Um, I would make a recommendation, we don't need to talk about it, but I've been at Twain a long time, and I'm well aware, um, this was violently opposed when it was brought about a few years ago, and, I mean, elephant in the room. I think that as a board, you need to make a plan before you announce it, that what is going to, um, happen, what's your policy going to be on, teachers wanting to go somewhere else other than somewhere they don't wanna go, and families, because the families, the kids are going to be hearing dissension at home, they're gonna bring it to school, I think there needs to be a strong consideration for the violent opposition that will.
We've been, I was actually on the redistricting committee in nine-ten when we first proposed this, and I got some of those emails. Uh, they were awful, they really opened my eyes to some things in this community that I was really blind to, it was pretty hard.
Mm-hmm.
I was really naive, and, um, so frankly, um, you know, for me, it kind of started back then, and then my work as a, as a teacher of kids with emotional behavioral disorders, you know, at secondary level, really saw oftentimes the kids who, who, where they end up in second grade, or in the secondary level when they aren't prepared, and frankly, you know, the sad thing is, I get to see more of those kids' pictures in mugshots than going to college. And so I've seen what this does to the kids, this separation that we have, is vastly different, you know, different, both teaching environments and learning environments, I mean, it's just, it's like being in a different community rather than in the, in the same community, and so, going into this, I knew it was coming, I've, I didn't keep all those old emails from my past district, but they burned into my head. And so I knew we were gonna, and I think I've been told the board all along, hey, this is what's happening, this is what's coming, and I think what, one thing we've tried to do, um, because we know those voices will be there, and I can tell you, every one of those voices was based in fear and not knowledge, you know, it was just based in fear of the unknown and not the experience. Since then, I've had many positive experiences with, specifically with people who have themselves chosen to move from a very homogeneous school to a more diverse school, and they're universally super enthusiastic about that, um, even if they feel they lose out on some of the things that the homogeneous school can offer, um, the, the experience, and it's one that, you know, it's hard to, I was teaching to, or speaking to a teacher in Solon, and she said, you know, it's really hard for us to talk about or teach about diversity, because we don't have any real life experience with it, it's academic. And that's the same thing that's happening in our schools for our kids, right? And, and when they get to junior high and high school, you know, they're gonna all be together, but I don't know that they all know how to get along together, and they don't know how to necessarily interact, and so, um, I think we, one of the things we've been doing is frankly, reaching out to the folks you're talking to, that's why we've done our meetings and places we've done them, is we're trying to engage folks who typically aren't engaged in this process, and it is a challenge. Um, sometimes our translators outnumber our folks, but we have the translators there, and we're ready for people who are gonna answer questions, and those smaller groups have allowed us some opportunity to do some real dialogue, because some folks, I mean, I've had some Uber rides with people who love that they moved here, and I'm like, where do your kids go to school? And they're like, I don't know the name of the school, we just love it, and, and they don't know it, right? And so, so I think what we've tried to do is, let's build our allies, you know, let's, let's put knowledge out there so people look at this and say, this is our district, and we want every school in our district to look more like that middle bar there, because that's the big C community, right? Yes, we live in, it's none, nobody's fault here that we built a, a school on a golf course in the sixties, in Cora Bell. And it's nobody here's fault that the way the housing policies work in Ives City mean affordable housing really doesn't exist, and that our neighborhoods are very economically segregated, that's nobody here's fault, it's none of the kids' fault. We, as a school board, are one of the few governmental bodies that can just do something about it, and we're not doing something about it from up here. We're trying to get to the super bottom of it, I know you guys, I'm sure you guys all feel like, why didn't we go to you first? My guess is in July, we wouldn't get this many people, I mean, we were being, we were very.
I, I, and I would like, as a parent of children at Longfellow that are, that are now a city guy, and as a teacher in the district since ninety-seven, I would have been there.
Well, I can tell you, we've had very similar meetings, I mean, we've been talking about the same thing, and there's three people in the audience as opposed to, you know, this group, so.
So to go back to knowledge, knowledge is power, we all know that, okay? With that knowledge comes a plan, and how that plan is pushed out does make a difference in how many people potentially are around the table, how many people might be in the audience, how many families are informed, regardless of their language, regar, I mean, we need to be creative in the way that we're pushing it out, if that's the case, because I think really honestly, any of us can sit here and say, we know facts, we know, we know what the graph says, but when you're in that classroom, when you are working with these parents, and I, I, I'm an educator that's been in Ives City School since, for quite some time, and I've worked with a varying amount of, of different families, um, students, children, and the one thing that always wins is giving that knowledge, giving them the power to understand what we are trying to do for their child. This plan is for their child or their children. So, maybe it's pushing it out through Longfellow, through Twain, in letters with a plan that is printed out in the language, that is sent home in their backpack. Maybe it's going to the door and actually handing to them, if that's what we need to do. But the talking can continue, and it can go on, and we can state facts, and we can state our graphs, but until we are actually physically reaching these families, there, there's going to be pushback, and there's not going to be a lot of acceptance, and, um, I just, and this is me being passionate about being an educator, but it's about kids, it's about children. My own children belong to a school district in which they are doing parents. Has it worked out fine? Absolutely. Was there pushback? For sure. Was it hard for kids to change, being bused from one school to another? Absolutely. I think no matter what decision is made, it's going to be hard, but kids need to be at the forefront.
Can I say something, and I really don't talk at these type of meetings, I really don't. So, I just became an administrator a couple of months ago, and so I normally listen and just see what the real deal is. And a lot of things have been said, my notepad is full of things, you know, and one of the things I wanna do just to challenge our educators, I've been an educator for seventeen years, the last place I taught, besides Kirkwood, was the west side of Chicago, okay? Level-three school CPS, when I left, it was level-two plus, because we did the work. Something, and I'm a numbers type of person, something I believe that you've mentioned was that even your Hispanic and your black children were at thirty-two percent, that's not okay.
It's not okay.
That's not okay, so what are we doing?
That's right, exactly.
What are we doing? Because that's what brings equity, education brings equity, you know, so I, I would make that challenge, for real, yes.
I would say also that to make a huge change like this because of test scores, it doesn't sound like a great idea for me. To make it so that it's a, a viable, learning, safe environment, that's a reason to do it.
It'd be great that.
If we can, if we can obviously get test scores up, that's, that's great, and I, and I think there's plenty that we can do. But that's not why we're doing this, it's an environment, we have kids who, I used to think, for some of our students who live in chaos and who live in a lot of trauma at home, I thought, you know what? Those six hours a day, we provide them with calm, but we don't do that anymore, we can't do that anymore. So now, these kids that live in trauma, experience it all day too.
Yep.
So, we have no, they have no respite from.
So, we have no, they have no respite from trauma, because we are so inundated with kids that live in trauma, that...
And not alone.
And I think it's just not academic.
You're not alone.
Work with the trauma.
'Cause our kids...
Yeah.
You would be very surprised.
Yes.
It's still different. But there's a lot of trauma.
Does Twain have a behavior-focused program? Does Twain have a behavior-focused program?
It came to you.
Well, that's true. We have some extreme students at Longfellow that, what is Jenny's doing? You know, I'm just wondering.
And with one child and behavior-focused. Behavior-focused, right?
I think as a board, has discussed the environment change that pairing our schools will see. Um, test scores is, they, they are a business for some of our populations. Um, but for me, that's not the priority. Um, having my child have gone through K through twelve here, and seeing populations at her schools, and seeing what happens when our kids live in isolation from K through six, and then all of a sudden, we throw them this hodgepodge of, whoa, well, I can't talk to you because blah, 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 blah. That happens today in our schools. If we don't address the environment that we're bringing our K through six, because by the time they get to junior high, for some of them, it's too late. Trying to correct it in high school, it's beyond too late. We have to get them through K through twelve. And one of the ways to do that is unfortunately, looking at bringing populations together. We are not trying to operate in isolation, but at the same time, we can't go out and throw all this up against the wall, and then be inundated with all this information, and then be expected to make an informed decision. So as a board, we did sit out and make a plan on, we wanna hear what the curriculum side will look like. We wanna hear what the transportation piece or the operation piece will look like. We did, and I just wanna go on record, not to point fingers, we wanted you all at the table early on. But we didn't wanna infringe on your summer break. I live with an educator. I know how important that time away to rest and refocus is. So we thought the earliest would be September, fresh. Hopefully, you would have been notified and have been watching some of our conversations. So, we're not trying to make your lives more difficult. We're not trying to cause this internal trauma that I, I mean, I think that's happening right now. We want to do what's best for our kids. So that way, when they progress on, that we're raising some great, amazing kids that all of us would be proud to say, that's my kid. Blood-related or not, because that's what's going to be important. And right now, we're just not seeing that. And a lot of our schools, not just Twain and Longfellow, it's a lot of our schools that's struggling.
I think I would be more sold on an idea. If we move beyond just putting a different kid next to that kid in a seat. And we don't know what those curricular changes will be. Because right now, everybody kind of does the same cookie-cutter thing in all the different buildings. Same curriculum, same way we're supposed to instruct. Anybody should be able to read a script. The fact of the matter is, it's not the best way that kids learn. And we need to figure out what the best way, you take the thirty-two down percent, and turn that around to sixty-four percent or more, very quickly. And I don't think as teachers, we feel that. And that's a big concern I have, bringing your fragile population to us, and knowing we're only at this percent right now. And we are trying, but it didn't work any either, you know? And we're, we're really thinking of the kids in that situation. Something has to change. So I appreciate the fact you're looking outside of just the idea of pairing, and looking at it from an instructional standpoint. We'd like to have some input on that. And we wanna share some best practices, what you guys know every day, what works and what doesn't work. 'Cause we need to be doing it already with ours. But right now, it feels like it's just we're gonna put a body next to a body in a building. Again, you gotta understand, that's where we're coming from.
I totally get that.
Without you telling me, my curriculum, the way I do my day, it may be alternative, it may be innovative...
But it also matters what, who kids sits next to. It does matter.
It, it does matter.
That you sit next to someone who has different experiences. It does matter. It does matter.
So, and that's the thing, you know, and that's why I don't like to just focus on the test scores, 'cause some of this is just about fairness. I mean, if you attended a day at Twain and you went to Longfellow, you'd see those kids get less, period. And that's, that's not fair. It's just not fair. It's not fair to the Longfellow kids to not really understand diversity until they get to junior high. I mean, that's not fair to them. If they lived in Solon, well, that's the community you live in. But you live in Iowa City Community School District.
We have our opportunity.
Forty percent of our kids are not white. But if you go to Longfellow, that doesn't look like Iowa City. That looks like that very small, very wealthy neighborhood with those really beautiful houses and beautiful lawns. But it's, it's, it's like a bubble, it's like a pretend bubble. And if parents choose to move there and live there, that's, that's their option. Though our kids don't have to experience that, because we do see it when they get to junior and high school. I mean, our kids self-segregate quite a bit.
I understand, I understand that too, what you're saying. But I feel like your comment just a minute ago is one reason why my teachers didn't really wanna come, um, and express their concern, is because I think that right now, you're, again, you're, you're trying to pit us against each other, and we're seen as kind of the, you're seen as the underdog, and, and, and not, I'm not saying that that's true. I'm just saying that that again is the, one of the reasons the teachers didn't wanna come sit here, because they felt like anything they would say, people would think that we don't want those kids. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
And I, and I don't, so when I, I think even when I share the concern with the teachers, that's not, like, I don't want anyone to think that that's my opinion of itself. But I, I did say I would speak for the teachers, and so that is, um...
And I apologize, I mean, I really don't want to entomb that, the problem is...
You said they lived in a bubble, the Longfellow family lived in a bubble. If you go back, if you go back, my son was a kindergartner in the redistricting, and our school was very, very closely with the Twain families, on how we could work together to keep neighborhood schools intact. I sure don't remember a whole lot of Longfellow families saying, not in my backyard. We were actually PTA, I was PTA president at the time, trying to ask, what can we do to help? And we weren't even looking and realizing that we had our own issue in there that we needed to. We are now, but there, again, the families that you'll meet, that are meeting for our PTA, they're, that's not that, they're not living in a bubble.
And I don't wanna project that, um, people are doing this with any intention.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I've, I've been thinking, and I have a lot to say, and I'm gonna try to convince it and make sense of it, so I apologize if I don't. Um, again, for, both from a parent perspective and from a council perspective, and I've been at Twain for nine years, and I've just, I've seen us go through this. And I've seen us have these conversations. So first and foremost, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for trying to be very planful with this. Thank you for thinking of our kids and our community, and, um, trying to get feedback in a way that makes a lot of sense, and to try to move forward with a decision that's going to benefit our kids, and do it in as timely a manner as possible. This is the most efficiently I've seen it done in, in my, in my time here. So I appreciate that. Um, I, I also, I don't think anybody's trying to pit us against each other, and there is, there is some history, and that's the reason that we're so passionate. There is history of people saying, I don't want Twain kids. Those Twain kids are, I don't want, I don't, there were people, when this was talked about years ago, that said, I don't want my kids going to school with those kids. And so I feel very passionate about that, because those kids are not only my own kids, but they are the kids that I love and care about, and they deserve a, a, a fair education, and they deserve to, to be in a school where they get the experiences of everybody. And you know what? I don't know, I, it's so many different things, 'cause I feel like we've got to make our schools more equitable. But man, we're doing good things at Twain right now.
Yeah.
It's just really, really hard. It's really, really hard for our kids, it's really, really hard for us. And I just think what seems like challenges right now could be great opportunities. You know, we could, we could really, the things that we have learned because we've had to. You know, the things that we've learned because we've had to, we can share those ideas. And we can come together and really make two really magnificent, diverse schools that are great for kids. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from. But I do have to say, if, if, if it is, and I don't hear, this is not me hearing it from, from any of you, so please don't take this, but if it, and I hear this from our, our staff, that our biggest concern is, if it's going to be our, our three through six kids at Longfellow, there's still Twain kids and Longfellow kids. If it's still a school within a school, and it's us versus them, we don't want that. We'd rather deal with the difficult day-to-day than that, 'cause that's not good for anybody, so...
It's the climate culture, someone made a comment about that, and the supports, and the, whether it's professional development, or curriculum, or team building, I don't even know what, but we've talked about that a lot. We just moved this, and there's no segregation within the school, we are not...
Yeah, and I, I believe that. I think that's more like history stuff, that's...
It is, it is, you're right. I think that that's the fear, that, that, that he didn't, you know, some did not want to come and speak tonight because of...
It's a misperceptions of what the current situation at Longfellow is.
Yeah.
Because we have a behavior-focused program, we have very large class size. I work at Longfellow and Wood, and it's at, Longfellow's a challenging school to work at. We don't have an assistant principal, we don't have a staff, we get one principal. I mean, I just think that there's, you know, and not to harp on you about the whole comments, but I think people perceive us as something that we really aren't.
Yeah.
You know? So, just to put that out there.
We're giving previous schools that it's...
Yeah.
It's a challenging school.
It's definitely, there are a lot of things going on, and I'm...
And there's great things going on.
And just like, I'm sure there's a lot of things that are challenging at Twain as well.
Yeah.
I think that what we hope is that, 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 that is the opportunity, right? That, that both people who are doing great, strong things in your school, you share that. And you be, it, the whole becomes better than the parts. I mean, I, that would be my most optimistic goal.
And I hear...
You go, and then move on around, yeah.
Yeah, and as a student-family advocate, I think I'm most excited about being able to share some of the high needs, 'cause I mean, as new to the, I'm new to the district this year, just the amount of high needs that we have, it would be nice to be able to share that, that with, um, that with someone else as well. So I, I see that as a good thing in the pairing, that Amanda and I could work together.
I think also, if you, if this happens, and there are teachers from either school that don't want anything to do with it, often they'll transfer.
And that would be...
That's fine.
No, we do have, we have transfer, I mean, that's like an ICA.
I mean, not necessarily, I think sometimes there, if we wanna go to a different school, we are to interview for that job. That doesn't always happen. So, let's have it not happen for these teachers that don't want to be, 'cause if you don't wanna be with, it's gonna be hard for a couple few years. It, it's gonna be really hard. And if you don't want any part of that, you're not all in. Or you're... Yeah. If there's an opening somewhere else, and you wanna go there, you got it. Like Exodus.
I just wanted to say, I mean, for me, I don't wanna make it clear to you, the heart of it is not like that we don't want people to come in, it's the idea of cutting it, getting to people, the people going out. You know? It's not, we don't want those Twain kids. Because I worked at Twain, and the kids are great. Um, and it's also the just heartbreaking, I think, to split the ages. That's really, the age thing is bothering me more than anything. Because as a specialist teacher who sees everybody, I really think there's something to be said for the continuity of knowing a kid from the time they've been here until the time they leave the school, unless you have really high mobility, which you guys do. Um, we don't have that issue as much, which is wonderful for us. But, I mean, it's amazing to see those sixth graders leave, um, and know that you have followed them since they started, and they were wetting their pants, you know? And now they're like, teammates.
You guys should remember that.
When you're on the age thing, splitting up the two ages, have you guys considered like four and up school programs?
It would be tough for the BSPs to have K-three, or K-two and three-six, 'cause there's a lot of sharing and supports between the older kids and the younger kids and stuff.
We do rely on older kids to provide...
Yeah, we have talked about that, keeping the K-six above them.
It's chaotic, because you guys, like, a lot of teachers have thirty people in class, and we have, right now, we have a hundred kids that are sharing now.
So that's something that we have talked about, is whether we have the P at both schools for all ages. It's also a transportation barrier for parents to drop off their kids in two different places, and then pick up their kids in two different places, from before and after school. So we're, we're sort of, this is one of the challenges we talked about.
Oh, for sure.
We certainly have our older kids that are charged, and the younger sibling home.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. We've talked about keeping, you know, if your homeschool normally is Twain, and you would stay at Twain through before school, and then after school.
And it's just something fundamentally sad to me about thinking about a school that's just, the little kids are just the big kids. I don't know, I think you lose a richness of experience when you separate the kids like that.
I guess I have just one, another question, or it's something to think about, is, I know we're talking about, school sizes, classroom sizes, and especially your bigger picture for the schools. And, um, I think you have said many times, you know, people buy houses in certain areas for different reasons. And so I just didn't know if that has been discussed, is if there would be a shift of move-outs or move-ins that would, um, that would have a real effect on the class sizes. Your now three-hundred-and-sixty-six kid building at Longfellow, um, and, you know, we talked about facility plans and different things like that, I know you've heard about that. And so I was just wondering, um, you know, if that's something you had considered, I know that that was, um...
I think one thing to think about in that is that there's a lot of kids right now, because of how our housing is. They don't get to choose where they're gonna live and go to school. Their, their choices are very limited. So if we have people that are going to move because they don't wanna be in this community, unfortunately, there's a lot of kids that don't have that choice. So I've, I've really gotta think about those kids, because those are the ones that, they don't have a choice.
And the goal really is to have everybody kinda in the middle, so it doesn't matter where you move, you're gonna have the same...
'Cause what happens right now, this is...
I mean, if it moves beyond just a two-school pair.
That's, that's, that's a kind of...
Yeah, we won't say bad. Madison, Wisconsin is probably a fair comparison, Iowa City, another college town. They have three different pairings. Uh, they also have a whole lot more, um, busing kids way out of, which I would imagine is for demographic, you know? So this is not, this is a common problem in college towns, or some of the most segregated towns in the country. And so, you know, we're not alone. Um, pairing every single school makes zero sense. I mean, you know, when you get to six-hundred cohort schools, you know, that's, especially if you're talking about busing from far away. But as far as the housing goes, I mean, right now, you know, my anecdote, uh, 'cause I'm a Kirkwood parent, and if you look up on Zillow, a house in the Kirkwood neighborhood, that's a one. And so I was having a conversation with a woman in Taekwondo. Her kid was there, and her husband's a doctor, and they were moving into town, and she said, she didn't know who she was talking to, you know anything about the schools here? I was like, well, I don't know. And she's like, my husband says, we have to buy a house in the Wickham neighborhood. It's the only one, because their number is such and so. And she, I don't think she knew what those numbers came from, but there, that's what happens. And I think that's why, partly why the problem has exacerbated, is 'cause people come in not knowing the community, and they're only getting just a house in those schools where they have those, those numbers. And so this, that's what we want. We want every, anybody to say, I can buy a house anywhere in this whole community, from North Liberty to Hills, and feel great. But, because the truth is, once our parents go to the school, and all of our schools, every one, everybody loves their school. There's not a person in this district who's like, our school's a problem. And you know, the problem about sending those kids? I know, I'm sure it's at Twain, 'cause I know it's at Kirkwood, like, our hearts break for kids we may have to send out of our schools.
Yes.
They do, so, so everybody has that, right? The truth is, you're gonna love the new kids, and the families are gonna love the new schools. I, I mean, I think our data and our history kinda show that. Change is hard for everybody. But data also show that after even a couple of years, not even a full cohort, people get used to these kinds of changes pretty quick, especially kids.
So, my question is, how is the district helping with transfers in the district? Because looking at Kirkwood's transfer list, I could like educate myself, and I'm looking at kids we've never seen that were granted transfers to other schools like Wickham, like Lincoln, like other schools, period. We've never seen these children in kindergarten.
Yeah, that's, that's coming up.
And so... Yeah, because I, I would think that before we do this big overhaul...
Yep. Right there with ya.
That we would start at step one. Let's stop these transfers.
That is the, that is the discussion that we plan...
I'm done.
We do plan on addressing that.
Yes.
And that's a, that's a conversation that we have had, we just haven't put it on our board...
It's one of the agendas for...
Right. So, that is a policy we're going to address. Because if we don't address that policy, we won't have any change.
Is that, is that an Iowa law that you have to have something in place for that? I was just curious.
Well, for our safety reasons and.
So, now, when no child left behind went away and the sign of school thing went away. Uh, we used to have to provide busing so that people could go to a different school. That went away. Um, then we didn't have to provide busing, but we still had to offer the option. Again, went away. So now it is not required, um, to allow people to, uh, transfer their kids to a different school. And, and that's one of the things that's actually on our presentation as, as a tool in our toolkit, um, that we're looking at boundaries, we're looking at voluntary transfers, we're looking at pairings, we're looking at, um, the trainings that the teachers need. We're neat, we're looking at a whole lot of things that are part of this whole big picture. Um, and that is a very big part of it.
I think that transfers sends a clear message that we believe all our schools are great.
Right.
We believe in these little schools. What you get to go here, it's awesome.
So we're working on that one very, very directly and I think that's something that we can change pretty quickly.
Yes.
I just really appreciate everything everyone has said and I, you know, what you've said has really touched me. And I think, you know, in our hearts, we all have the same goal in mind. I'm gonna put myself out there and let you all know that I'm very opposed to pairing the schools. Not because I don't have the same goal, I want the same things, um, but the cons that I see for paired schools are just glaring to me. Losing our connectedness, the small, the small details that really are the big details in, um, students' lives. Being with siblings, having the stability. All of our programs check in, check out, trying to connect kids with, um, teachers that they'll have in the future or connect them with teachers they've had in the past. We've got that all in one building. It's a, it's an amazing experience, um, to be in a neighborhood school where like I, we've gotten to know families over years and years. And people become so close and it's nice for the kids to have multi-age, it's nice for classrooms to pair up and collaborate. And I know that one of the advantages that for, um, paired schools is that you're with your team level of people. But I think it's an advantage to be with people with other expertise, areas of expertise. You know, I'm a school counselor, I'm looking at the social emotional, um, I'm thinking about the kids that I've met with through the years. I don't want them to have another, um, transition in their life. I, I want to stay with them all the way through and I want to provide the best counseling that I can. I, uh, there's just so many flaws that I see with paired schools. Um, and it's really hard for me to put myself out there and share that, uh, because I feel like it sounds like I'm really anti, you know, the goal and everything. But I have the same goal at my, I think we all do at heart. Um, I just don't think paired schools is the way to get there.
So, big question that we have?
I know, I know, I knew that was coming.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure who got there. So I'll, I'll put my educational perspective on this. I think that, um, you know, I've worked with this, uh, demographic for twenty years. This is all I, this is all I know. Okay, it's not how I grew up, but it's all I know in my professional. And, you know, my whole career, I watched these kids come to my school that they just don't, it's just, we can, we can beat around the bush, but they just don't have the same opportunities. They just don't, okay? They live in a basement with, with dad and a girlfriend and five other kids in the little basement with a bathroom that barely works. I mean, they just don't have it. The only way, if you really want to improve them educationally, is to equal playing field. And the RAM model that you guys use, I think is amazing. I think it's great. I wish we would have had that where I was at before.
Right.
But I really think educationally, if you really want to see these kids have more opportunities, then I don't know if pairing is exactly the answer, but you got to figure out something to get this happen. Because I just, that's been my experience and I just want to leave that. I mean, the teachers are concerned, everyone's concerned here, but if you get down to that focus on the kids, our kids need to be in a setting that is just a more equal playing field. I mean, so, I guess I'll leave it at that. I wish I could articulate it better, but I'm going on sixteen hours. I mean, it's a long day.
Man.
And I agree with you. I liked the RAM model. Uh, when it came out, I was like, in theory, this is great. When I go and visit the school and I see Chris's classroom is in one-fourth of Lisa's, um.
Right, right.
Library now, which is, I don't even want to call it a library, because it's hard to that anymore. I mean, you do it. I mean, it is it.
Yeah.
Uh, and we just don't have the space. If we could keep putting the resources in there, I would understand, but the space and the money is just not there. So we've got to. Twain's maxed out. It really is. We're putting it into a classroom, will be maxed out. Uh, yeah, there's, something has to happen. Something has to be done, but.
And it's a, it's a very expensive one as well. I mean, just to, you know, I.
Oh, for sure.
I worked, I worked hard for a long time in this district to get those salaries where they are and I'm super proud that we pay our teachers what we do. But, it is, it's, we're gonna run out. We're just gonna run out. And the RAM, like I say, people say, well, more teachers. Yeah, where's that extra classroom for another class? And literally, we don't.
Class size, there's a limit though. There's, there's a limit. I mean, you know, you could have a teacher and five kids. If two of those kids are running around your room and are having breakdowns.
Seven.
Yeah, 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 whatever. It, it's, it's just, so, I, I mean, I, I, I won't say one way or the other, what I would recommend. But I, I guess something appeals to me educationally where we equalize the playing field a little bit. And I think it's very, it's fascinating to me that this district has the opportunity. Because I haven't seen this anywhere. I, I tried, I Goog- Google this, you can't find it anywhere, so it's hard to prep your teachers when we come to this. So, there's an opportunity here and if it were to be successful, I think that would be something pretty neat.
But the districting just seems like you couldn't balance it out with districting.
The, the, the hard part with that, um, so, so folks. Well, one, then who leaves Longfellow? Who, who, who makes that choice? And we would. And that's tough to say, okay. And two, pockets of wealth aren't as concentrated, you know, as pockets of, of poverty. So for example, if you move a trailer court, you're gonna move a high FRL cohort. The neighborhoods don't break out that easy when you're talking about non-FRL. It's not as, this neighborhood right here, if we move them, we know we're gonna get this kind of a balance. So it's, it is, that's the hard part, right, is you can, you can move the low FRL kids because you can identify pockets. But the, the pockets of wealth that you move, you know, then what you end up doing is really goofy looking maps that are gerrymandered all over or busing. And that has, you know, that's a, that's its own, has its own challenging cost as well, say, and then we have some of that in the school.
And we've, that's what I was saying, we've tried that.
And we've tried it.
We are doing that in some of our schools, um, and we're still seeing the uneven playing field. So, I mean, I, I respect that, um, right now, I, I don't expect people to be, yes, I'm a hundred percent for this, because there are tons of unanswered questions, even for us as a board. So I respect that. But at the same time, I think as a district, we're at the point of, we have to do something. We've talked about, well, and we have changed our boundaries. We've bused kids who are on the bus for a huge amount of time. We get those emails about kids being on the bus for two hours a day. Going into schools where they don't feel as welcomed because there's, they're the ones that's just being dropped in. And we're just at a point where, um, in reading, was it the handover report? And looking at how do you walk through the process, um, it's a checklist of pairing schools. This for us, along with some other ideas, did bubble up. And it's not just for Longfellow and Twain, but we have to start somewhere.
When all of this started, how, ten, fifteen, however many years ago, somebody at one of the forums said, what's the city's responsibility?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does, how does that change? I mean, at the heart of it, isn't that by Wood, Twain, and Alexander?
Yes, it is.
Absolutely. And we have, uh, worked with the city just recently in July, where they, uh, passed an amendment, um, really making a statement about working towards better affordable housing. Um, because we have to start there. Because right now, what we're seeing and what JP talked about, the pockets of poverty. It's always in certain areas. So that means it's always going to certain buildings. So, we will have to work with the city, um, and our county to ensure that they're addressing those problems and those issues. And that we're just not operating in a bubble as a school district. And that's going to have to rely on the people that sit, see, sitting at the table. If we're putting people at the table that just want the status quo, we'll be the same that we were twenty years ago, twenty years in the future. And at this point, I don't think anybody around the table wants to continue that discussion that we just keep going around in the circle and not addressing the issue. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to hear other solutions, but until we get something that's feasible right now, I mean, and we're working through the process to see if this is even something that will work for our district. And I think that's part of the miscommunication. I, somebody said earlier that we have this plan that we're just sort of going through the motions. And I don't know if people haven't watched this board, we're not about going through the motions. We're working through a process and I for one have never committed to, oh yeah, I want to bring this to a vote by November. Because there's too many unanswered questions. I don't know when this would happen, if it would happen.
Can I jump in there? I, we gave our presentation that I alluded to earlier at, uh, Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. And, um, I was very grateful that, uh, we had a pretty big crowd there, but they were there to kind of weigh in and get some perspective. And the one piece that I'd like to share is that, um, there's a lot of history, it was sort of a chicken and the egg. Like, we can't do anything in the schools because the neighborhoods are the way they are and that's just how it's going to be. And if it goes the other way, well, schools just need to deal with it, because, you know, deal with it, right? And I think from the perspective of the Affordable Housing Coalition, it's reciprocal. You start to do better integrating in your schools, the neighborhoods around the schools become better integrated. And then it's easier to integrate your schools, neighborhoods become more integrated. And it's a positive for everybody. It's not the positive for the kids down here struggling. It's not taking away from the kids up here that are doing well. Everybody does better and the neighborhoods get better, become a much better community with capital C as JP always points out. So, there are positives that are long lasting, that's really, what's in my heart is, I, I'm very concerned about the kids that you guys are all teaching now, but I'm concerned about the kids five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now. Because if you look at the way our district has gone, right, we're only increasing in the number of kids in poverty. We're not increasing test scores. I understand test scores is not the only thing, but they haven't gone anywhere, right? They're, we are wanting to set up something that is going to work for everyone. And I, you kept mentioning a plan and something that we had brought up was coming up, and I think I've already alluded to it too, is, what is the plan in really stepwise back? Here's pie in the sky twenty years from now. That number is a nice line across the board and all the kids are doing great, right? That's, that's where we're all trying to get to. If we're going to get there, we're gonna have to do fifty things between now and then. Not two things, right? So, work back on it and I put it in the context of the way we did our December master plan. There's a whole lot of crap we need to do. Let's figure out the steps we're gonna do and how we're gonna piece that together. We need to do some sort of balanced integration plan, right, and stepwise figure out what all those pieces are. Pairing Twain and Longfellow is a piece. It's not the only thing, right? Where it fits in the equation, I think, can move back and forth all over the place, right? Other pairings can move back and forth, changing the little boundaries here can move back and forth. I think we've really got to nail down the end game, but I don't think we can wait until we have this perfect solution, because we'll never have it, before we do anything. And I mentioned earlier, right, it's that balance between urgency and doing it right. That's a good question. Um, like I said, we set, uh, a timeline based on what the district has told us. If we're going to make a change for twenty nineteen, one would be asked to decide that. And I believe it's, like, November, right, of this year. And, again, we don't have that plan. I'm gonna tell you, in my gut feeling is that we might try and tweak some boundaries that will have immediate impact to a certain degree for twenty nineteen.
And voluntary transfer.
And voluntary transfer.
And then, so we have to start with that, with the heart of helping our students. And that Longfellow, you know, there's always people that have to come and play, but if we don't start, we're not gonna learn. We're not gonna have conversations like this, which I just have to say has been the most amazing, one of these sessions that I've attended. You guys, your passion and heart and everything on the verge of tears listening to you. But we have to start. We have to have, I think, we need to try some things, be thoughtful about the impact, understand and prepare ourselves. Get some, get some learnings from that and then keep the planning and what's the next thing that we can, can, can do that's gonna move us towards that end game. It's, it's not gonna be a flip the switch and, but we have to be smart, methodical, ending the line and not be afraid to try some things.
Can we also focus on all those other buildings on that chart? Because in all those other buildings up there are children of color who cannot read. And if we want to break the cycle of poverty, get them out of the basement, we gotta teach them how to read. I'm not about a percentage test score. I want to know what tests covered, what they know. Every one of those schools up there needs to have the same amount of emphasis that we're talking about Twain and Longfellow right now. Because if we're only into helping the kids in these two schools, it's pretty sad.
Uh, no, we are talking about all of these schools.
But right now, from a paired standpoint, we're simply saying paired for Longfellow, Twain. I'm thinking of a instructional standpoint. We need to start having these kind of discussions as staff members. More of these where we can share what you want to share about what's working really well, because we have some of those students. Every one of those buildings here. We are dying as teachers to have that collaborative time, to talk about that. Everything's being told, you're gonna do this for this time, you're gonna do this for this time. We just want to have these heart-to-heart conversations with each other.
And that, those kinds of issues that we've had for a long time, like, like collaborating between buildings, obviously super big challenge in our professional development model. I mean, I don't think the board is gonna get, I, you know, down to that in a degree, but I do think those are important conversations. Frankly, I recommend you continue to have those conversations with your principals. I would personally encourage you to have those conversations with ICE and be, make that be a vehicle that you can have your voice heard. Because the truth is, there's lots of different voices. And the more your voices come together, you know, we're not gonna solve all these problems, but frankly, we don't know ninety percent of what you guys are doing. We're making these decisions up here, but between you, your principals, the administration, I, if everybody's on the same page, then those sort of details about, I mean, I don't, uh, I don't think we're the curriculum experts to decide what's gonna be best. I don't think you want them, right? So, teachers, principals, administrators, and it's not perfect, but I do think we have a good relationship. And I'm hoping this can be a part of that. And frankly, we do need to touch. I mean, the only reason Twain and Longfellow rise up is they're so close. You could practically switch populations and nobody would be bussed. I mean, practically. That's how much those boundaries overlap. That's the only reason they rise to the top. That's it. Because they both have that super, they're the closest, some of the closest schools in our district with some of the widest disparities. That's why it rises to the top, right? And we don't want to pair just a pair as well. We don't want to make it worse and we, we don't want to add to busing. I mean, cost is really important and that experience is really important. So, and, and I'll also say, I think probably just as important, if not more important, pairing is the work we're doing with implicit bias for all of us. That we all understand, because that's not, you know, that's just about examining our lens and who we are and how we interact. And so that work is going on, like, I've never seen it go on before in this district. And I know we're committed as a board to continue to support that. And to make sure it's not like, oh, we did implicit bias training, check, move on, that it's a, we're in constant process of this. We're constantly understanding this. I, I feel the same way about curriculum. Oh, we've got math, now we're done. Nope, this is a constant, hopefully, we're always doing that in education.
So, just quickly back off of what we said, you know, with the curriculum materials.
Yeah.
And I think from the educator's standpoint is that regardless of the child or children that walked in your door, it is our responsibility to provide them with the most optimal learning experience. And so, if we were to go ahead and, you know, if it was decided that we were forging ahead with the K two building, three six building, what have you, I do think that there is, um, I think it needs to be. I do think that there is, I think it needs to be recognized that, yes, we are both seeing challenges in both of our buildings. And honestly, I think probably any school you go into, they're going to say they have their own challenges, right? So, but I do think that that would have to be, we need to have a clear lens looking at the supports, resources, and staffing in place for both buildings regardless of what is decided upon. I think that is what sets great teaching apart from good teaching. And, but we also, we also need support. We need to know that we have, you know, if we go ahead with this and that RAM is lifted and those funds, you know, is helping out the district in that sense, I understand. But in turn, are we just going to keep our class sizes higher with lesser resources? So, are we really fixing the problem? Now, as far as bird's eye view looking in, absolutely. It's going to look, it's going to, there's, yes, there's a difference, okay? There's diversity, which is absolutely beautiful. And I will be in that absolute hundred percent. But outside of that bird's eye view, we need to be taking a look at how are we serving these children regardless of what they like, regardless of the home that they come from, what have you? How are we serving their needs? How are we serving their trauma, behavior, and academics? And so, I think that's probably the greatest, one of the greatest spheres that we have as educators going into this process is, are these resources now going to be stripped away?
So, let me speak to that, because I take it super seriously. I don't, I mean, I know, you know, I took it, you know, when I was in Brady's position, I took it super seriously to negotiate that contract to keep. I know they say it's eighty-four cents and I'm like, well, what about eighty-six cents of every dollar goes to our staff, right? So, here's my opinion on that, is that if we're saving, say, two and a half million dollars from RAM, that's not gonna go to, you know, that's gonna go to staff. What that looks like, do we support our student family advocates more? I frankly think we need a whole lot more mental health support. And we've got some of the most of any district anywhere. And this doesn't even touch me.
And so, Stephen, that's where I see, when I go back to that plan, that's where I see that to be identified. This is what happens, or this is what we propose to use, some of this RAM on a board. Because that's what we don't know.
Well, and I don't know if we know it either, because we, because this changes so much down the road, right? If the state passes save, we're in a much better thing. If politics change in New Orleans, we're in a much better place. But if you look at what we've been doing, so we have got, I've talked to doctors who have recruited pediatricians because of our school-based mental health, who shows us over Stanford because of what we have going on in our district. And I work in inpatient child psych. I know it doesn't come even close to what we need. Not, it's about a tiny drop in the bucket. And everyone knows that, you see it every day. So, and that's not, we're not alone, right? This is everywhere. But we, our district has made the commitment. We've committed to student family advocates, right? That doesn't happen in a lot of districts, right? Now, so hopefully, you know, and if we, you know, keep electing board members who kind of see this vision and we have our admin who stays that course, we continue to increase those kinds of things. And not at the expense of class size. And class size is important. But I don't think anybody thinks it's a silver bullet or it's the magic solution. It's super important, but we know we need these other supports. And the district has been doing that robustly. I think a lot more than a lot of other places. I'm super, of course, supportive of that continuing and really, but what it comes down to, we want to do everything and then we look at that budget. And it's like, and we're gonna be down a million and a half dollars in two years. And what do we, what do we do? And I don't want to get to the place where we're like, now our budget's down, what do we cut? Because I don't think we can afford to cut anything. I want to see more foreign language. I want to see magnet schools. I want to see certainly mental health supports and lots of opportunities for our kids. But we only have so much and it is about priorities. And so, for this, we're like, okay, let's, because one thing we know for sure is the environment matters. And there's only so much money you can throw at the environment. Title I's a great example. That's been a federal program for a long time. National test scores haven't moved hardly at all. So, it's not working. Clearly, it's not working. I don't know that just more money. I think we always say that, well, if we only had more money, if we only had more money. I don't think that's the only answer. I always think we need more. But the truth is, money doesn't solve the problem. I think frankly, the things I've heard here kind of in, and I apologize, I get super passionate. I spent my teaching career in this district with the kids who definitely were already way through the cracks and they weren't coming back. And that's just drives me every day. Even, you know, here in child psych, now those kids who are struggling with mental health. So, that's my passion and I get worked up and I do. And I don't want to disparage any teacher or family in this district for living in the world we live in. But I've heard some super positive things about, here's how we could work together. This could be the collaboration opportunity. And there's gonna be some pros and some cons, but I think that's what we're looking at. What is that balance? And I definitely believe that you all and all the staff of your buildings are gonna rock this, whatever this is. I've known a lot of teachers across this district in my time in ICEA and now. And I know we have the best staff. It's phenomenal and we're capable. I wish we could collaborate. We, you all could collaborate more together. I think we're missing that. I don't know what that piece looks like without changing some structural things that are probably outside of the board. But I believe in it. I'm done.
If we do the pairing, we can have Mark Fellow or Long Twain. Totally not have those separate schools anymore.
Exactly. It's one institution. And we had that discussion too, to see how that would affect funding and everything. But since they're two separate addresses, it would be that. But you're absolutely right. That's what you have to get by if you're doing it. And it's one big class. And instead of just having kids, you have friends in one building. How your friend base potentially has expanded exponentially that way. So, you're right.
I know we probably want to wrap up, but I also, just being from Longfellow, we also have Isabel Montgomery funds. And so, I do think we have to, you know, that's probably not, you know, but that does have stipulations.
Sure.
There are logistics that, but that's, I just wanted, I know you're about gaining facts and stuff, so I didn't know, leaving this, you know, on radar.
You're absolutely right. And our discussion at Southeast, it was, you know, there's a certain financial benefit from a certain level of poverty at a building. And so, how do you balance to maintain the funding streams and that? And that's what JP was alluding to with some of those coming out of the nutrition funds. Absolutely. Now, how many students did Isabel Montgomery have in her classroom? I forget. I remember seeing the photo. Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
It was forty-five, right? I remember seeing the photo in the library. I hope it's still there.
Yes.
Now, my question for you all, because when we started this conversation tonight, there was a lot of anxiety and concern and things happening and behind all those doors and decisions have been made and fear, interpretation, that word was used. What can we do to start dispelling some of that fear? I think maybe just, we said we're not gonna be doing a pairing. Do you think that just, it's gonna help dispel some of the push of it? That we know we've got a lot of work to do, we've got some things that we'll do before that. But what can we do to help engage, you know, listen, learn? Do we need to do more of these kinds of work sessions and invite more folks in and have these? Because I'm concerned about that fear. I don't want people feeling afraid about this. So, what can we do?
Is there a place where we can read about other people's experiences? Like, is something driving this idea based on other people's experiences? I feel like that would be helpful. Yeah, other districts, like you mentioned Madison.
Yeah, so there's a, so in, where, Steve can tell us. So, we have a, there's a really good document called the Handover Report that just goes over a lot of these things and talks about a lot of different, it's a pretty in-depth study about, well, not just pairing, but boundary changes, pairing.
Are there any other pairing experiences, like nationally that we could look at?
Most of the pairing I know in Iowa is because of districts that are so small, they just need to do it, right? So, demographically speaking, there's not a lot. There's not a lot out there. Madison's done it.
There's some in larger cities.
But I don't know that, I don't know.
I think Rochester has some.
It's often college towns, you know? So, I think.
Are you using that to inform your decisions?
Using it?
Like these studies, the personal accounts, the research base?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm hearing you say, well, I think, I'm not trying to be.
Yeah, so if you look at the Handover Report, that's got all of that stuff.
I've heard that it happens here, here, here. What intent do you have to look at that and rely on that? Or is the board at different points saying we're confident enough in what we know now by the plan that we've taken and the angles we've looked at, that that's not needed and we have what we want?
So, probably the researcher.
Like you're saying, are we, are you relying on that heavily, moderately?
Yeah, I would say personally, I'm more relying on just what is happening in our district and seeing that it's great for some kids and for failing some kids. So, that's my driver. But nationally, Richard Collenberg is one of the bigger researchers in school integration and the benefits. And he's got a lot. You Google Richard Collenberg, you'll see tons of peer-reviewed, good research about all kinds of things from integration actually helping test scores for all kids to just the social dynamic of what it does. So, it's out there, but I'm relying way more on what's the experience in our district? Because we can control that and we have all of that data. And we can see that so far, you know, all the things we've tried for quite a few years aren't moving the needle very much. And so, and at the end of the day, I'm probably most, personally most heavily relying on just fair, what's fair. And having seen kids fall through the cracks and just really being done with letting that happen one, I mean, I guess we're waiting one more year. But it kills me every time that I'm like, that some people in this district get essentially what could be a very expensive private school experience, K-12. And some people in this district get essentially what could be in a city with generations of intractable poverty. And that, that's not our community. I don't believe either one of those is really our community.
I don't want to move beyond just fair. Just fair. Fair's nothing to me. I want to move to where I know I'm getting kids out of poverty. I want to know this is proven to have that academic boost that they need. And if this is weighed more heavily than curricular changes, instruction changes, doing a building a different way to teach the way they learn, I just don't feel comfortable with that.
I can appreciate that, but I know right now we're failing kids.
I know we're failing kids too, but we could just be failing them again tomorrow if we're just making things fair. I want to move beyond.
I think it's a place to start. And if it isn't fair, that's wrong. That's a fundamental value.
A couple of years ago, we went to, our kids went to another school for an author visit. And we sat in the gym. And their school was on one side of the gym, our school was on the other. And it was the white side and the brown side. I mean, we were all like, oh my God. Like, it was completely segregated. Because we're a school who have varied humanities. And I thought, I mean, both schools are missing out on a lot. Both schools are missing out on a lot. My kids went to a worse man. And were there times when I was like, yeah, you know what? I kind of wish my six-year-old parents stayed where they're going. But you know what? She's gonna hear that on the bus going to high school. She's gonna hear it. And she may as well learn how to behave when she does. And how to talk to people that look different than you and act different than you and work with them. You don't even have to like them. You don't even have to understand them. You have to know how to work with them.
So, thank you. I am so keen to hear what more things we can do to alleviate some of that concern and.
Can I reframe that thought? Not, what can we do to get? And I don't think you were meaning it this way, but I think it's being heard. What can we do to get everybody on board with pairing? I think it's more, how can we make sure that everybody is comfortable with the process? And what's being heard to get the solutions? Because we really are looking at solutions. Pairing has been the most recent thing to come up as having pretty significant potential, right? It's not the only thing. And maybe it's not even the thing. Maybe it is the thing, right? Maybe we do find the proof that it's the thing. I don't know yet. None of us know yet. But we need to do something, as everybody has said, and maybe it's the thing, maybe it's not. But I think we all need to not be pitted against each other. We need to all be saying, okay, how do we get to a solution that's gonna work? Because what I've been saying to people is, we need novel ideas. And this is definitely a novel idea in this district, right? We've done a lot of the same old things and they don't work. There are other novel things, changing how we do some special empowerment and, you know, co-teaching, things like that. There are a lot of novel things we should be looking at. I want to make sure that none of you feel like your voices that had concerns on this side were not heard and none of you over on that side feel like you were not heard. I think it's unfortunate that we have Longfellow here, Twain over here, putting you on opposite sides of the table. Because all of those concerns are valid. I would like to, as I remember, somebody down here was talking about pros and cons and seeing that balance, where the pros are, where the cons are. And it's not just, let's get it this way. But are there hurdles? I'm gonna use that term instead of cons, that there are workarounds that we can make them less of a detriment to pairing or anything else for that matter. And how can we enhance some of those pros that we're already saying can make them better? Putting a bigger team together, all right, there's opportunities to do more team collaboration if you then allow the team to collaborate and give them the time to do it. So, it's not one or the other. It's gotta be everything. And we all want to make sure that you all are here, not because we wanted to tell you what we're doing. We want to get your take on things that will work, things that won't work, but things that may work if we do some other changes. And I think we've got some of all of that tonight. And I really appreciate you guys taking the time.
A decision might be made. And I mean, it may turn out to be not the right decision or not the optimal decision, but it's better than doing messy. We've got to try something. At least then we've learned, okay, well, we did try that. It didn't work. Now, what's the next step? But something has got to be changed.
Can you say when you plan to vote on the pairing with this school session?
We don't have a time set for the voting on the pairing. We just do not.
But we're confident saying it's not going to happen next year.
It's not gonna happen in nineteen, in the nineteen, the year.
The implementation won't happen in 2019. But what, when is the vote considered?
So, we're still, this is our process. We're being really open with it. We don't have like the secret plan that we're gonna roll out. This is informing us. And this will inform the next. I mean, the truth is, the work we've done since June, every week we've been meeting and this has evolved and this will evolve it further. And so, it's informing. And as more people learn about it, we'll get lots more feedback, which is gonna inform the process moving forward, so.
We've been making sausage in public.
We've been making sausage in public.
And we're working through it, so there's no.
We don't have a date. That's the answer. We do not have a date. We can't tell you when because we don't know.
There's no idea, mustn't anyone?
We're still working, we still have so many unanswered questions, as I think could be seen tonight.
And I'm just gonna say, I don't know that it will ever come to a end.
Right.
Because we're still in this learning process of trying to understand the impacts, listening to folks who understand what we need to do. And so, we may do our research and do our listening posts and roll up our sleeves and go, this isn't gonna work for us. And we're gonna take on other solutions that we've learned through these kinds of discussions that we think will do a better job. We still think it's got, it's got a lot of possibility, but we may not get there. We're going through our process. I mean, we're making sausage in public.
I will say though, what we are trying to do is, is the boundaries are changing in 2019. Boundaries are changing. And we've been told by our administrators that we have to have a decision for boundaries by, I think, December. They told us it can't be past December. So, as we think about these other, as we think about these other things like pairing schools, we're fitting it into that paradigm of if we were to pair, which we can't make that decision right now, but to have, so that, so whether we're not moving kids year after year after year, moving boundaries, let's try and think of our boundaries in the context of the other tools that we're thinking about, like pairing.
If you do make the decision based on all the information, then I think I would say to.
She, if you do make the decision based on all the information, then I think, I would say to, going forward, include the people that will be in the building in the plan since it is all new. Um, and to, yeah, let plan, let the people that will be there plan with you instead of being told what curriculum it is.
If you didn't know by the end of the school year and you knew you had next school year, the whole year to plan and collaborate, I mean, that, that feels like a, a good amount of time to do that kind of work, whether it's pairing or anything, or anything else. And it, it'll be more work than we've ever done for other boundary changes. I mean, more upfront work. I mean, usually decisions are made and maybe we haven't gotten any lot of forethought to, how will these kids be accepted in that school, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we're being more thoughtful about it, um, we're trying to get better at it and we're trying to be as inclusive as possible.
And understanding sort of the steps along the way too. I mean, we may get to a pairing, but we may decide that four of the things have to happen first to prepare ourselves, probably, to make that next big change. So we're still sorting through all those things, so, um, anyway, thank you.
That's a good point, and especially as you said, you know, if you give, you give yourself a year and you would have time to plan, I think that's also be reflective of what you're also asking of the staff during that year. So yes, a year seems like maybe a good timeline for you, but I think again, giving that feedback, what really is that preparation from a school standpoint?
And that may be all our PD, the whole unit. That's it, that's all we do.
And we can make those very potential decisions if we know we're going in a certain direction.
And visit each other's schools and...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Now, we've got recordings of all the work sessions, correct, Kim? And they're available, so if anybody wants to see how the process has gone from the beginning, uh, all the way through.
You can listen to it.
They, they are available.
Okay, sorry, I feel like I'm going back to this communication of just our, we, the families. Because yes, we can go back and we can listen to those recordings, but what about our families? What about our families who don't know where to access that or have access to it? Which is why earlier I was saying that I think we need to be a bit more creative in the way that we're pushing this out to families. What do we know? What don't we know, but trying to figure out? It's open, it's transparent. And I think when, when, as educators, as parents, as students, we don't know, that's when we feel uneasy. And I think we have a lot of families, um, who have a lot of unknowns. A lot of kids have a lot of unknowns. And, um, I don't know, I just, I, I think that we don't have to know exactly the entire plan right now, but I think it's just essentially, this is what we know and this is where, these are, this is what we're exploring and how are we pushing this out, not just to educators, not just to building administrators, how are we pushing this out to our families that are going to be involved, um, as well? I don't wanna use the, I don't wanna use the term effective. Because that's not how we should be looking at this. But we've got to...
I think you, you guys can tell us how to do that. You know how to best, I mean, because we sat around the same table and we tried to come up with a list as exhaustive as we could. And we were trying to focus on our typically, um, communities that aren't engaged or don't have the ability. And it's still a challenge, so we've had translators. So the more ideas you have about how we can reach families and, and the folks who are, are involved, send them our way, because we're, look, I mean, we're seven people and we can all, we have jobs and it's hard for us to get everywhere. Uh, so we do, would like to target, if we can get in front of groups is great. Obviously, PTOs are an obvious avenue, but we know not every, every family's engaged in PTOs. So the more ideas you have, just send them to us and...
As a board, can you develop what you would like to have pushed out and communicated? Because at that point, we can Google Translate, we can...
Yeah, and we've got a presentation, but I don't think this is what you want.
This is probably...
No, 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 I know that's not what you want.
And so, yeah, I think that's a really good, I always said you were talking to some kind of, this sounds dumb, but like some kind of resource kit or readings or, but something that starts with what are we trying to accomplish and why?
Yes.
And why it really really matters, because it's our students and the equity and, and what, what does that end game look like? And then here's some things that know, here's some things that we don't know. Here's some stuff to read and wanna learn more about different, uh, solutions that other districts have put together. And, you know, maybe we try it out with a PTO and get some feedback on how we're finding that and then, you know, it's like a resource kit, I don't know.
Yes, yes. I think there's...
I have struggled with that, exactly. Because I, I, I wanna speak for these guys. It's hard, harder for me to do, you know, write up a synopsis of something that's very squishy, which this whole thing is kinda squishy, right? There's not a lot of, you know, here's the confines of what we're doing. It's evolving and it's changing. And I've had much better luck having a dialogue sitting at a table when people are doing some of these presentations where it's, well, what about this? And I was like, oh, we have talked about that and this is how we've talked about it. What about this? Oh crap, we haven't talked about that, right? And so it's, it's hard to, to do what you're asking and I totally understand why it's important. So I think we're gonna have to be very deliberate of how we put that together and how it's, these are knowns, these are unknowns, and I, because I think a lot of it is unknowns or what ifs, or maybe this, right? And it would be very exhaustive, I think, if we really tried to do something that was going to be informative enough that covers all of the topics that have been raised. So I, I want to do it, I, I absolutely do. And it's been brought up before that we need to put something out there instead of just getting, you know, this little story that you heard your neighbor talk about it or it was an article in the paper that had a certain amount of information that was missing some other stuff. Or, you know, there's different ways to get that information if we're more cognizant of making it global and the same message going out everywhere, that's, that's great. But I, I, I have personally struggled with how do I concisely convey that when I know that every time I've given this presentation, it's about thirty slides worth, I've done it differently? Because we've had meetings in between or we've talked to other people in between and every time I do it, I put more into it or I change the narrative a little bit and from the focus, right? Because I am not the expert at it.
Yes.
You know what my end game is, right? What I'm trying to get to and that's positive solutions, but it's, it's hard to concisely say we're doing it. It's not so bold.
That's why the third time you do a lesson, it's really...
I was gonna say, it's very similar for a child walking into the door and you know nothing about that child's background, history, what they know, what they don't know. And it's a lot of time and digging and effort. It's a lot of performing different assessments. It's doing, um, it's bringing professionals in to, um, do behavior assessments on them to see what we can do to best inform, not ourselves, but them as a student. Because often they're unaware of what they're feeling on the inside and what they know. And I also have parents on the other end of that. I need to let them know how I'm serving their child and how I am going to make a difference in their lives. And so that's where I, I guess I kind of, I get your perspective and your side, but at the same time, I feel like that's what we as educators do all day long. We are always, always trying to figure out where that plan is. And that plan could run a mile long, but we gotta focus on maybe the top two or three priorities and start there.
I'm so mindful of the time, I think everyone's exhausted. I know Paul, one of the safety things...
I just want, I have a good way to wrap this up. And I appreciate everyone coming out because it's been a long day for all of you guys. It's a long day for us to work in here. I don't, Tuesdays I hardly see my family at all. You can probably ask Brandy, she never sees me on Tuesday. But I, I got an email from a parent from one of your two schools and I just, I thought this was fun. It's just a good way to leave. And the last sentence she wrote was, can we please talk about the domination of the Twain Longfellow will have at the fifth, sixth grade track meet with all the extra joint talent? We will be unstoppable. What do you even get when you class a Longhorn and a Tiger, if not a huge dominating beast of an animal? I mean, that won't be fair to the other schools and you'll hear about that. So with that, I thank you guys all for coming. We have to stay, but you're all welcome to leave.
Seven more items. You don't have to. Stay long.
I'll just go out there, I don't know about everybody else, but mentally, I, I can do it.
I'm on my last talk, so...
Yeah, there we go. Lori.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, and some of the things we need to talk about, we don't have enough information really to talk about.
So Paul, I already did your motion, I'm gonna say...
Well, the only thing I was just gonna add is, um, if, before our next meeting, if we could come up with initial some information so that when we have our next meeting, we have a... I, I hope we could do that tonight, but we're not gonna get to it, so if you don't understand what I'm saying? Okay, so like the example, JP had said something I'm telling you about what would be members possibly... So that kind of, like what we wanna know. So if we could all get that to see, so we could have that for the next meeting.